Okay, it is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Well, call me in order, please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or an unquote.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
We have the collector's March 2022 fees.
Okay, Commissioner Committee Liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
Campo Board of Directors meeting tomorrow. We've got our joint press conference Thursday afternoon for the AMLS substation. And I got present resolution on Saturday at the Blue Springs Archery Meeting. And that's about it until next week.
Have a Heartland Port Authority meeting on Thursday, a salute to America meeting scheduled for Thursday. Jeff has mentioned the event on Thursday afternoon at McCarty Street. Next Monday, where did the sheriff go? The sheriff's put a team together that I'm serving on next Monday for RAC's Rape and Abuse Crisis Center.
Well, do we have, do we have an ARPA advisory meeting?
Oh, today.
At three?
Yeah, I missed out, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I'm sitting there going, whoa, I got on my calendar. Okay, three o'clock, ARPA advisory. Yeah, dedicate, and it is black tie down at Adams and McCarty. Friday, I've got two Toys for Tots presentations. Saturday, some of the Union Veterans Meeting, and then the SAR Award Ceremony where Christie's daughter, I think, is getting an award. So that's all I've got. Any commission comments? Bids and contracts, signing of 2022-14 Elevator Maintenance Agreement.
Otis Elevator was awarded the contract for elevator maintenance and repair services in the amount of $15,600, and today I'm just needing signing of the contract.
Good.
Yep.
Make motion to sign the contract with Otis Maintenance.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of 2022-16 Interior Painting Agreement.
M Hoff Construction was awarded the contract for painting over at the EMS Building. It was the amount of $15,835 for work to begin on May 1st, and so today I'm just needing signing of the contract as well.
There's also $5,000 if you're looking.
Duly noted. All right, make motion to sign the contract with, you said M Hoff?
Yeah.
Okay, M Hoff, painting contractors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review?
They need accounts payable review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll just keep going down because Ralph's not going to take long. Signing of agreement with public administrator legal counsel.
So, one of the last things on my original to-do list when I took office 19 months ago was to develop what I call a letter of engagement that describes the relationship between the attorney and the public administrator. Because I really had no idea what that relationship should be. So now, after going through this for several months, I have a good idea. And what I've done, I've laid out an outline, and I gave you all a copy ahead of time, and we reviewed it. And essentially, it spells out what the attorney will be doing for me. And essentially, he meets with me in court once a month or is needed. And if there's any other legal advice I need or anything else, he will address that as well. And so, I looked through the files from previous public administrators. I could not find the documents, so I thought something should be created to kind of, you know, show what is there so that whoever takes over for me down the road will have a good idea. So that's what I'm trying to do. And what it spells out is the work to be undertaken, the obligations as his client, his obligations, the hourly fee amount, billing cycle, costs, termination of the relationship, arbitration, modification, effective date. And essentially, that's it. And I've had Jill look at it as well, and she made a few minor edits to it that she suggested, which I incorporated. So I think it's ready to go for your all's approval.
You've talked to us, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it too, Ralph, and I told you I wouldn't have any questions, but I do have one.
Sure.
You have approximately 200 wards, is that?
Right now, the caseload is about 205.
205?
The most it's been is like 212.
Okay.
But I was informed by Richard Lee maybe three weeks ago that there's 19 individuals that the Department of Mental Health is getting ready to release to what they call community-based environments, which is the county. So I don't know how many of those individuals I might end up with. So that's a good question. My caseload will impact some of these legal costs.
Here's my curiosity, is approximately what percent of the wards require an attorney to help out?
I'd say probably about maybe half.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but some of them, depending on their acuity level, which means they're a higher maintenance, they might require more legal support.
Okay.
But I have a cap in here of no more than $15,000 a year.
Okay.
And that's to hopefully cover for any increase in caseload. I think last year attorney fees were like $9,000 or $10,000. So I put a little bit extra in there in case, for whatever reason, I get a huge influx of individuals.
Thank you.
Well, did we have budgeted for it? You answered all my questions before now, because you came up with that one, so. Do you remember, you said $9,000?
No, I don't budget for this.
No, this is paid by the ward.
Okay, so we'll have income coming in for the, to cover these usually, right?
Well, Ralph charges his fees to each ward that has available funds.
Yeah. And what was the last year?
Eighty-five?
It was about $85,000.
Okay, well.
So.
Okay.
So we just need to prove that because I didn't sign it, I think.
Yeah, what I would like to do is give a copy of this to my attorney as well. Then he'll have a copy, I'll have a copy, we'll have transparency.
Okay.
I'll offer a motion, go ahead.
Do you get this after you're signed?
I'll offer a motion to sign the agreement with the public administrator's legal counsel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, signing of resolution for tax credit sponsorship for Jefferson City Soccer Complex Project.
Resolution? It's right here. The application requires that the county pass a resolution.
Yes.
Good.
I'll offer this, a resolution of the County Commission of Cole County, Missouri, to approve the Cole County submitting an application to the Missouri Development Finance Board's Tax Credit for Contribution Program.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
There we go, keep moving.
You want to go ahead and do the application now?
Yeah, that's signing of application for tax credit sponsorship to the Missouri Development Finance Board.
Okay, okay, this, last week they made a presentation, so this is the application that goes to the Missouri Development Finance Board. Sam, there are two places for you to sign, and then Steve will need to authorize it.
Okay.
Keep it rolling.
Yep.
Motion to sign the Tax Credit for Contribution Program application to the Missouri Development Finance Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was rough, wasn't it? Um, do you want to do Architects Alliance first? Since, since we, I mean Larry, I'm sure he's charging us by the minute, so.
Better believe it.
You don't want to stay around, Carl?
Presentation of Phase Two.
Yeah.
Professional Services Proposal with Architects Alliance.
So, good morning. Joining us this morning are Larry Brandhorst and Abigail Steck, who are architects with Architects Alliance. So this proposal is in anticipation of the announcement that we will have on Thursday. Previously, we've completed a Phase One Architectural Design on the proposed substation. Today, we have a presentation of an agreement to proceed to Phase Two of that design. This, just a brief overview, they estimate an 11,250 square foot facility with on-grade access to each level of the facility. This presentation, or this proposal, excuse me, consists of schematic design, design development, construction documents, competitive bidding, and construction phase management. So, the presentation, the estimated cost for this would be $240,000, which would, I would suggest that we pay out of the, our capital fund, so our in-kind contributions, if in fact we were awarded the grant for the EMS substation. So, I've invited our architects here to answer any questions that you may have. We can continue to discuss this proposal after presentation today, or we can choose to vote on it, whatever you guys would like to do.
I don't think I have any questions for you, Chief. This is just a natural step in the progression of ultimately having a, the busiest ambulance substation in the county.
Correct.
A new, new spot for that.
So for us to continue moving forward with this project, this would be the proposal that we would have to adopt today.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I'm, it's part of the exercise, I think.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Do we need a motion to go to Phase Two?
So, so this is actually a proposal which, which they were, we would ask that. Yes.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to sign the Phase Two Professional Services Proposal with Architects Alliance for the substation planned at McCarty Street and Adams Street intersection.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let them off pretty easy.
Well, you did a good job, Larry.
That wasn't too painful.
A good job.
Oh, thank you all.
Thank you.
Should I sign in the box?
Yes.
We got to stick you out there for him.
Well, I mean.
Well, I know, I didn't see that until.
An initial each bay.
Hey, I have a stamp to do that, okay.
That would have been the other one.
Okay, so now do we want to go to your discussion of EMS schedule and salary changes?
We can certainly do that. So this is a culmination of about two months' worth of work, and we could probably have an endless conversation about what's offered in this proposal. So, for the sake of ease, I'll just offer the highlights upfront. So with this proposal, we're going to accomplish three different things. One of them being streamlining our current salary schedule, simplifying payroll, and some of the other practices that are completed on the back end. This will also allow us to staff an additional advanced life support ambulance at night, which would give us seven ambulances during the day and seven ambulances at night. And it will also increase our current salary pay scale to a competitive wage and what is at the upper end of our competitors' pay range in the mid-Missouri area. All of this will be done budget neutral. The way that I propose that we do this is several, well, probably 18 months ago, EMS was given an additional FTEs of 10 full-time employees to combat COVID. At this point in time, those positions remain unfilled. Well, six out of the 10 positions remain unfilled. So I would propose that we go ahead and freeze those positions and reallocate their salary lines to offset the proposed changes in this proposal here. What this would basically end up doing, it would move all of our employees to working the same number of hours per year outside of communications. It will move our, our normal staffing to a total of 15 personnel 24 hours a day. And again, this would all be done budget neutral. The increase in salary items, the dispatchers, our emergency medical dispatchers would move from $31,000 starting to $37,500. Our EMTs would move from $31,000 starting to $40,000. Our paramedics would move from $51,000 starting to $58,000, starting. And then, the rest of our salary steps would remain on the same schedule, starting at those new base numbers. All of these calculations were done with salary and benefits included, so this is a true representation of the increased cost. I believe that it's been signed off by both the auditor and finance as being sustainable and financially feasible. Questions?
No.
Does this get rid of the dreaded blended overtime?
Yes, this would resolve and do away with blended overtime. Our employees would now receive time and a half based on their hourly wage, regardless of what ship type they were working.
Okay.
And that's accomplished by having everybody on the same pay scale, working the same number of hours per year.
And these numbers were confirmed by salaries that I use state and federal numbers to confirm that they were appropriate?
Debbie stopped by yesterday to confirm that, okay.
Yeah, if Debbie's happy, I'm happy.
One of the questions I had for you, Eric, whenever we were talking about this, was we had 10 additional employees that we added for the COVID response, and were we able to go ahead and get rid of all 10 of those? But I think one of the problems was that we are having some, or enough calls to where it justifies keeping those four on to keep that ambulance going in the evenings and provide that additional coverage.
Yeah, so the total call volume in 2019 was, was over 9,000 calls, almost 10,000 calls in the two years since then. Last year, we were over 12,000 calls for service, so we've seen a 2,000 call for service increase over that two-year period of time. And one of the things that, you know, we had talked about is that, yes, those 10 FTEs were given in response to COVID. However, the call volume during that timeframe has continued to decline to where I don't necessarily feel comfortable in giving up those full 10 FTEs. Those, those four that we were able to recruit and keep onboard allowed us to open up an additional station. If we were to give up all 10 of those FTEs, we would have to look at consolidating back one of those stations, and I'm not quite sure where we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, it was a good answer. That was just one of the questions I had, so. And we can keep an eye on it. If we don't have the call volume to support it, then we can always back it off.
Yep.
But that was one of my major concerns, was keeping four of them that we added purely for COVID, so.
Well, you're like four times over some of our smaller surrounding counties, you know, with 12,000 calls, you're, yeah.
And, you know, one of the things that we, that we've seen by adding additional staff, it's allowed our ability to increase our call volume. So, you know, we are, as an enterprise, the more calls we run, the more revenue is generated and the more need for staffing there is.
I know, I get the calls.
How are we doing on transfers? Are we pretty much capturing all of those?
Yep, we are working with our surrounding mutual aid counties. You know, my promise to the hospitals is that we will get them a truck as soon as possible. So we do try and capture all of those transfers, but in times where we are very busy or we've already sent a truck out of county, we are using our mutual aid partners. But that is a couple of times a week.
Yeah, that works good, because then we get to generate the revenue with those, but then we can also throw them a bone once in a while, help out the neighbors, so.
Absolutely.
They're there when we need them and help them generate some revenue too, so. I'm good with that. I had quite a few questions for Eric, but we, let some emails go back and forth and.
Is that a reciprocal agreement? In other words, do, are you called upon to do transports for other?
Uh, yeah, if there was a large-scale incident or their system is overwhelmed, we do send units to cover, so it's mutual aid, so we go back and forth.
Okay, and this is to become effective July 1, as opposed to?
Correct, that is, it would actually be the first paycheck or pay period in July, which would put us right at the 50% mark. Half the year would be on the previous pay scale, the next half would be on the new pay scale. And, and in additional offset, the salary lines that we have saved for 2022 already will pay for the increase for this year alone.
And then the step scale goes up through, what, seven or eight years?
Uh, through seven years.
Seven years, and I think we need to address what happens after that. So, that might be something in the future to look at, because I don't want to tell them that after you've been here for seven years, then you're stuck on that amount. Maybe they go on to what the county gets, either Cole or Merritt, at that point. But this here helps us to get them here and then also to retain them and give them some kind of reward at the end of the amount of time.
That'd be a nice problem, yeah.
I would, I will offer that I'll take that and work with that a little bit, and we'll try and come up with a presentation for budget time and see what we can do for the people at the top of the pay scale. I agree that they should be rewarded for their longevity and not be subject to the same pay for foreseeable future.
Yeah, I don't want them just to leave after seven or eight years. I mean, we'll keep them here, reward them, so. Okay.
And Eric, since we're making this effective July, will the steps be July every year?
Yes, so, one of the things that we will do for our current employees is that in July of this year, they will receive their, their salary adjustment. They will effectively be frozen in their current step until July of '23, when they will receive their next step mark. So it's resetting everybody at their current step. And that's just kind of the trade-off that we need to do to get everybody onto this pay scale. What we do moving forward for new employees coming on, I think that's still up for discussion, and we need to figure out the best way to, to make sure that somebody isn't here for 18 months without a raise or something like that.
We were doing it on their birthdays, or not birthdays, but our dates.
We changed it at the beginning of this year, so we had two anniversary dates. Half the people got it January 1st, and half of them got it July 1st. This reset of July this year, we'll make them one year at that step next July, so.
The issue with giving it to everybody on their anniversary dates is that became a logistical nightmare to, to track and keep on top of, so that pretty much.
I'll let you know when my anniversary date.
Well, right, so, you know, it pretty much ended up in, in a constant adjustment of pay forms and those sorts of things every single pay period. So, we felt it was, it was better to go to a, a set anniversary date. Our staff was fairly accepting of that of this year. So, with the, the wage adjustments that are proposed here, that far exceeds any step adjustment that anybody would be due, so we'd go ahead and reset that in July, and then they'd offer their, they'd receive their next anniversary step increase next July.
Okay, I got all your questions, Steve, as far as the auditor's office and finance.
Yes, so the effective date will be July 10th this year, will be the first day of that July pay period.
Oh, okay.
All righty.
I think we probably shouldn't, right? I'll offer a motion to adopt the proposed salary and staffing schedule submitted by Chief Hoy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of Mr. Installation Increased Quote.
This is a change order in the amount of $1,120 for Mr. Installation, who moved the furniture. Huh?
MR Installation.
Oh, I was Mr. Installation.
That's.
Whatever, but they moved the furniture in the PA's office. The original quote was for $8,640, and it's now increased to $9,760. From my understanding, it's due to them having to add additional phases for offices and stuff not being ready.
Yep.
So why weren't they ready?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
So it just cost us another $1,100?
Yep.
Where did Greg go?
Oh, it's not Greg, it's.
That's a maintenance thing, upstairs, when they were getting the painted flooring in there, right? Sorry, you're talking about from doing the painting and the flooring up there?
Yeah, when we redid the whole third floor.
I think this had more to do with the employees having their desks ready to be moved. They were not ready to be moved. They had not planned for that or did not execute a plan that allowed them to move the desks. They had to wait for the desk to be emptied and so on. Our file cabinet's probably the same way. Can't move a heavy, or a loaded one, or whatever. It was, the office was not ready when they were supposed to be ready, is my understanding.
Yeah, I talked to Locke, or, yeah, I talked to Locke.
I hadn't heard anything about it, so that's, it's quite a bit of an increase on the project of moving stuff around, so.
Yep.
Who dropped the ball on that, or what happened? Why wasn't it ready? I mean, it needs to be better communication then, because if they didn't know they needed to have stuff cleaned out, was that on them, or was that on us, or, or what? So, that's what I was curious about. I mean, it is what it is.
Right.
It shouldn't have been, in, in my mind.
I agree.
So. All righty.
Yes, we, we took care of it, didn't we, Jessica?
We tried.
We took care of it, but then it cost us more.
I know, I know, and that, I.
I mean, that's like getting your hand in a cookie jar. You're going to have to slap the hand once in a while to keep them out of there.
Well, we, we, I had a conversation with.
With who?
With the prosecuting attorney.
I know, but was it on them or was it on us because we didn't give them proper notice, or what?
They had notice.
They had plenty of notice?
They had notice.
Okay.
So, yes, it was not Greg's.
I didn't say Greg's, I said us.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on us as well, we've got these projects going, we've got to let people know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Hey, we're talking over here.
Well, here's, here's the suggestion, Jeff.
She can come up to the table and talk about it.
Yeah, I'll repeat it. The prosecuting attorney, the prosecuting attorney has certain funds that we don't control. Perhaps this should be paid out of one of those funds.
I'm fine with it, wherever it comes from, it just shouldn't ever happen, is. And that's what I was trying to figure out, if it's something on our end, if we need a better plan, and if they didn't have it together, so going forward next time. We have some kind of agreement. If they're not ready, then it's coming out of their, their pot, you know, otherwise it's coming out of our pot of money, so. It's county money either which way, so.
True.
We can move on, I said my piece about it.
I'll let you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the supplemental agreement with Mr. Installation, MR Installation.
It says Mr. here, so.
MR, or something there, Mr. Installation.
Did you second it?
I made the motion.
Oh.
I did now, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of supplemental agreement with CMPS.
So, working with Jessica on this to get the design work added to the original contract or the agreement to do the work around the Carnegie Building. The original agreement was signed last year after some changes to that project with the handicap ramp and everything else associated. About a month ago, give or take, we met here and discussed what to do with the wall, whether to take that down and build a elevated structure with parking underneath or go with replacement of the wall and expanded parking line behind there. And that was the option chosen. So, as you know, Patrick Kramer did most of the initial work on the job. He's since left CMPS, so Paul Sampson is now the engineer working on the project. He submitted a scope and fee, and I apologize for not getting this to you yesterday. I sent in an email here this morning. So you might have a chance to look at that, this document here. So this is a supplemental agreement. It supplements the original agreement. And the additional design work to do, the retaining wall, removal, replacement, expanded parking area with associated work involved with that. It includes a geotechnical and structural subconsultant, Crockett Engineering. So the total amount to do all this extra work to add to the original agreement is $33,840 for a new contract amount of $55,511. And I would recommend approval of this agreement, the supplemental agreement. In talking with Paul, he believes the project could be ready for bid approximately June, depends on scheduling of the subconsultant to do their work. But that would be good to have that out for bid early summer and the work be completed this year.
Except not to exceed?
Yes, not to exceed. And in working with them in the past, typically, they don't hit that target amount. There is also work in here for construction inspection services and construction phase administration of the additional work required for the wall design. So that is a part of this as well, plus their design fees to do the work that they got to do, too. So there's several different items rolled into this supplemental to get all that work designed and ready for bid and then to take it through the construction phase and complete the project.
So we're getting ready. Once we get this approved, then we can get the front work done, too.
It's all part of the same contract, yes. That was rolled into the original engineering agreement back last fall.
Okay, I'm more anxious to get that front taken care of than anything else, so.
It'll all be one, one complete project, the whole thing.
Okay, well, so it should start this year, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I'm good, yes.
Yep. Do I need to initial every page?
There's a lot of stickies on that one.
I know.
I'll offer a motion to sign the supplemental agreement with CMPS for the Carnegie Building Site Improvements, project number 2021-19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got some Jesse lots.
Well, we are, as you know, we are installing bicycle spots here.
You're requiring a bike to work during the construction?
Could happen.
They got the little bird scooters up there. Just lay down in the front when you get there. When we get to that point, we'll have to figure that out because we've got city lots that we.
I think you just need to keep that in mind. You have to pay for that parking that we do an adjustment to.
Yes.
Cover that cost.
Same with, I guess, the, I don't know, the parking garage over there. We can just park it there.
You could validate parking during that timeframe?
So we might be able to do something with that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'd be something before we get started on it.
General Assembly will be gone by then, and there'll be more parking available in the garages.
To add to that, we'll have the overlays going on, too, of all lots. So we'll have to figure all that in. Now, the overlays will be a shorter term, this will be a longer.
There's plenty of parking.
Yes.
Not right in front of the buildings and not right here, but down the street, agreeing?
Well, that's why with the sheriff's lot down on Adams and McCarty, we're doing bird scooters for them, so.
He was sitting there being quiet, saying, leave him.
I was being nice, I didn't say a word.
You had to poke the bear.
Yeah.
The bear.
I just wanted to know we were still thinking of things.
Oh, no, it's a good talk. Everyone's talking relaxed, but.
Okay, yeah, we need to keep that in mind and try to get a plan. Let everybody know a little ahead of time.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
Don't think so.
Motion to go into closed session under RSMO 310.021.
Six-ten.
I'm sorry, yes, it should be six-ten. Six-ten point zero-two-one per N19 security.
Second.
We're all call?
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.